Thank you for joining us this evening. It's a regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on July 10th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Dana, would you call the roll?
John Lanier.
Here.
George Glover. Ben Salsada.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Randy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor of Gorman.
Thank you. Tonight, Councilman Ben Salsada is going to lead the invocation and Councilman John Lanier is going to lead the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Please join with me here. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day that you've given us and we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to come here and assemble all peacefully in a free country. Thankful for your blessings to us as individuals, as a city, as a state, as a country, or we want to thank you for that. And we ask here, give wisdom to each one of us tonight as decisions are made that affect our citizens. Give guidance on that and help us, Lord, to bring honor and glory to you. Bless our night here. Be with George and his family as they're in Florida with his mom. Give her strength and give the doctor's wisdom on how best to treat her and give George and his family just a great peace during this time as well. We love you and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. John?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm still pulling up my agenda items here, but I would ask since our council president isn't here tonight if we could pull the item in regards to this administrator residency position off.
I would agree. I think that makes good sense. That was part of the reason why it came back is because we needed a full panel of the council. I know the council president was in favor of that and it would be wise if we have all members of the governing body present when we talk about this again. Is there a second? I'd second that. Okay. Oh, I buzzed in. Sorry, I didn't take. George?
Well, I'm going to be a no vote on this for a couple of reasons. First off, I think we ought to go ahead with it. And secondly, the last regular council meeting, I made a request that we put something on this council, something that affected the citizens of this town, something that I felt like we really needed to do. And for whatever reason, administration chose to ignore me. Therefore, I'm a no vote.
Okay. That would have been my fault. John, did you want to add to the agenda a line item to discuss adding a $500 donation fund? Is that what you want to call it?
Well, I wanted a discussion item. Why wasn't it on the agenda? I asked it. I'm an elected official. I got a right to ask.
Okay. And that's what I'm trying to fix right now. Is that okay?
Well, I don't care what you do, really.
Okay.
I'm a no vote.
John, did you want to put that on there?
I think that'd be great. I don't know what it is because I wasn't here and I apologize, but if George had told me what it is, I'm happy to add it.
I asked, very plain, at the last regular council meeting, because of compliance is going after people painting their houses. And some of these people just simply don't have the money to do it, much less pay a fine. And I thought maybe we could do something to help them, you know, if they wanted to apply and try to get assistance. I thought it would be a good idea, but...
So, why don't we just add that in position of our discussion about the seed administrators?
That's fine. New item A.
And I'll make a motion. We approve that agenda, the amended agenda.
Jim, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. John, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. We got a motion and a second with amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ben? I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Aye to the opposed.
Okay. So, we're three-three. All right. Everybody in favor of the new agenda with the new item that was added, signify by raising your hand. Okay. And opposed, and that motion passes four-three. That brings us to awards and presentations. We don't have anything this evening. In public forum, we have Gary Whiting. Gary, if you want to come up.
I was here to talk about the now pulled item, so I'll just give you my thoughts now.
Okay.
I've heard about this concept of, as I understand it, attempting to hire a city administrator without requiring them to live within the city of Park City. Is that correct understanding?
What I want to do is remove us from the state statute that requires that. Because the way it's written, if, let's say, somebody from the city of Oklahoma applied for the job, we decided they were a good candidate and they were going to move here and let's say they couldn't find a house, so they had to build a house and maybe they were in a rental in Wichita, we would not be able to hire that individual. It puts handcuffs and restrictions on us that keeps the council from being flexible on what we could potentially need to do if there's a qualified candidate that might want to move here.
So, can I dialogue?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, is the final intent of the council to have the city? Is the city administrator is the proper title?
City administrator, that's right.
City administrator live within the city limits, or is that ultimately not going to be the final decision?
My personal thought is that we need to keep our options open. If we have somebody at maybe a county level that's senior, that has connections, maybe they have a child in high school, it's a junior or senior, that's just an outstanding candidate but doesn't want to move or relocate, we could miss the opportunity of getting an excellently qualified person in here. So, what I want to do and have a desire is for somebody to live here, but I want the council to be flexible enough that if we needed to negotiate or move around, we would have the ability to do that. Under the current state statute, we do not have any ability other than they have to be a resident of Park City.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. As a resident of the city of Park City since the year 2000, my wife and I bought a house here. Our church has been here since about 1992, I think, or '91. And currently I have the privilege of working here in the city. I work next door at the clinic as one of the healthcare providers. I think it's important for us to have a certain amount of pride and consider that our city is an outstanding city, that it has, it's a good place to raise children, it's a good place for families, and it's a city that has, I think, a good reputation and it's one that we need to continue to maintain. And that by saying that we're going to, that living within the city limits provides some sort of a disadvantage for hiring a city manager, I think degrades our sense of understanding about the importance of the city. When I mentioned this to my wife yesterday, she said, "Well, they won't have any vested interest in the city." It's almost like, I won't say what it... But, I mean, you're hiring somebody to live elsewhere, to come in here and provide leadership. Their perspective on what's important for the city is going to be different. It's going to be colored by their citizenship being elsewhere. It would almost like being a Canadian, being President of the United States. That just doesn't make any sense to me. And even though we're not talking about countries, we're talking about cities, it seems to me that if this is a city where somebody wants to provide leadership, it doesn't make any sense to have what's technically an outsider providing leadership for our city. I don't think that the insights and perspective would be sufficient, that we could always trust that the best interests of the city were being protected. I think that basically covers what I wanted to say, but I wanted to leave that, my insights with you in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well spoken. Next, Emile Burquist.
Good evening, council and staff. Appreciate getting to speak with you just for a short time. Some of my thoughts, and this is about the same issue that Mr. Whiting spoke about, some of my thoughts are simply that I believe that our city has a great blessing of being able to have leadership, as all cities do within the state, have city council or commissioners that live within the city that they govern. The other thing that you have is you have a mayor and you have an administrator, most of them do, or a manager. And those two positions are more ambassadors 24 hours a day for the city than even the rest of the governing body, because they're present a whole lot more. But they also represent the future plans. They represent the best interests of the city day to day. And I believe we have been fortunate in the situation that we are in now with the current city administrator who built buy-in, built, invested time into the city over a long period of time, even before he became administrator, and yet still provided some of those same services. And I just wanted to present a possible idea, if you're going to be considering it in the near future, is that you consider a charter ordinance that would allow for a certain amount of time for that person to make their move. Because if they want to strongly represent the city, and they've probably gone to college and gotten a degree, to be able to qualify to be that administrator or that leadership position, because they lead the whole staff and they lead a lot of the direction of the city, I think it would be a great opportunity for them to say, "That's a job that I'm willing to make a move for." And if they were fixed in a certain place and they didn't have time to get it sold or didn't have time to get a house built, that possibly, say, a year, a year to have a year opportunity, if they were close in the community, to make their move. So, they would have some kind of a commitment to long range for the city. And that way, that potentially could be yet another charter ordinance. It's not quite, not quite as drastic a change. And so, it's just something to consider, but if you guys would, I'd appreciate that. We appreciate our city. We've lived here since 1991 and plan on living here for quite a while.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. All right. That was it for public forum this evening, so we'll move to staff reports and we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be short and sweet, like the agenda. I will be going before a selection committee at WOMPo either July the 18th or the 25th. We're trying to get a date and time set up so I can go and present our project of 61st Street, including Broadway intersection and 61st Street to the Floodway. And I've got my presentation all ready to go and one of those two dates I'll give a presentation and then we'll see if we get the grant. It will be for 2021. If we do get selected, that means that in January of 2019, you need to sign a contract with an engineer. It's a two-year process with KDOT, not anything less than two years. So, you definitely want to get a contract if we get the grant. And we should note, wouldn't be time by then whether or not we're in the temp or not, then it's going to be very imperative that you get an engineer signed up to start designing because it does take two years to go through the KDOT process. And you don't want to lose over $2 million over the fact that we're a little late getting that done. I've talked to Dana about some of those things that need to be looked for and everything in that regard. Basically, I will be trying to finish up with several things. You've got the park board comprehensive plan on your agenda tonight. I will hope to have the city's comprehensive plan to you by the middle, I think, August the 18th for your approval. The process is a little bit longer for the cities. We have to notify the public 20 days prior to when the planning commission holds a hearing on the comprehensive plan. They'll hold that hearing. Once they approve it, then it will go on to you folks for your final approval of the plan. So, hopefully that's going to occur. The timing, I was hoping to get it on their agenda this month, but the timing with that 20-day rule just didn't work out, so it's going to end up happening in August. It's basically done. I'm having my planning secretary check my grammar and some of those things before I move forward with it. So, basically, you will also be getting a final plat here in your next meeting as well. So, if there's any questions, I'd be more glad to try to answer them for you.
Anybody have any questions for Jack? Not seeing any. Thanks, Jack. Next, we'll hear from Rick Norman, our Director of Public Works. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, July 10th. Before my department comments, we'd like to note to council that last council meeting, I reported that we had removed the berm on the north end of Poston Park. I had also mentioned I thought that would help with the drainage over there. That evening, we had got a brief rainstorm and got a call on that the next day and went over and checked it out and we had standing water on that sidewalk. So, I stand corrected on that. We do have a plan to help with that. We're going to lower the elevation on the east side of that sidewalk, so hopefully this time my assessment will be more accurate than last time. As far as my department comments, Park Department, we'd completed our July 4th preparations. We'd done extra mowing and weed eating. We had reworked the beds in front of the entrance to McLean Park. We'd also reworked the horseshoe pits, done extra tree trimming up there and put the perimeter fence up around the fireworks display. We did have another algae treatment on Chisholm Point Lake. I believe that was the end of June. I don't, I forgot to write down the exact date on that. It was the end of June. We also had two dead trees on the right of ways, one in the 6200 block of hydraulic and one just west of Daylight Donuts. We got, had those trees removed. Street Department also completed our 4th of July preparations. We, extra mowing and weed eating. We did run the sweeper over the parade route, tried to have everything looking as good as we could. We did complete a rotation of mosquito fogging on the 28th and 29th. We also have the next fogging scheduled for July 19th and 20th. We did accept delivery on a three-quarter ton truck. This is for the street supervisor. We currently have that at the maintenance shop, getting that worked up and expect to have that on the road within the next couple of weeks. Water and Sewer Department, the average workers per day for June was 31. And also, we accepted delivery on another Ram three-quarter ton truck on the 22nd. That one's currently at Midwest, getting the bed and boxes put on that. Any questions?
Rick, I just want to say, I know on hydraulic, you guys spent some time out mowing this afternoon and cleaning that up. And there was somebody over there that chose to use the sidewalk as their own personal launch pad for their fireworks and left that mess there. And I noticed that your crew picked that all up and I'm thankful and I'm also sorry that people couldn't respect the commons areas of the city. Thank you very much for your guys picking everything up. It looked much better this afternoon. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Rick? Not seeing any. We'll move on to our building inspector, Bob Walker. Bob?
Good evening, City Council Mayor. I'm Bob Walker, the building inspector at Park City. I'm giving a report about what's the activities going on in the building department. As of so far this year, we've issued 38 residential permits. That's for new house starts and there are some, a couple duplexes involved in that number. But interesting, in June, and we issued 16 permits for residential starts in June, which is real interesting because in '13, we issued zero, '14, zero, '15, zero, '16, two and seventeen, excuse me, 16, five and two and 17. So, it's an awesome number for house starts.
And Bob, I just, I want to point out while you got those numbers, so in 2017, we only did 42 new home permits and so far this year, we're at 38.
That's correct. 38 residential starts now. That's not including all the other numerous permits that we've issued.
Right.
Okay. I wanted to bring you back up to speed. I don't know how, hope you're doing the pictures, Jack. That's right. Okay. This is where we abated this single car garage and this is kind of the picture before it started. At the same time when we abated the garage, we also worked with code enforcement, Jennifer, to clean up the outside yard. So, we had several violations going on at the same time. And that shows where we started. Can you show me the next one there, Jack, please? And that's kind of a picture of the inside of the garage. If you look at all the stuff that was in it, I don't know what you call it, garbage, I guess. If you notice, the roof structure was completely open, so the garage needed to come down and there's some of the outside stuff. And then I think I have a picture showing, next slide, on the, in, that's showing the front of the garage, but the one to the right, that's showing the person that demolished it, how he's cleaned up the yard and we've left it as a concrete slab there, which the slab really wasn't in bad shape. Anyway, 1915 Fairchild was abated and taken care of. So, that was something that actually ended up being like a two-year project, but from start to finish. All right? And so, I'd like to talk a little bit about why we have activities going on in the commercial. Kies, Kies Manufakery is adding on some engineer offices, which is really great. It's going to be 5,500 square feet addition for the engineers and it's valued at $1,294,000. So, it's going to be a pretty, pretty nice office addition. And, okay? And then we've got this Windfield Solutions. It's going to be a, not only a warehouse, but it's also going to be office dotted too at the same time that's getting started. And that's going to be a 251,000 square foot structure. If you notice where the tractor's sitting at there, that's the actual pad site which is being built, going from north going to the south. And they're about two-thirds done with that as far as getting the pad built. And that project is valued at $7,438,000. That's a pretty good-sized project. So, they're moving along rather quickly. We've kind of got them slowed down because they've got to get their retention stormwater all in place before they can start putting impervious down as far as any concrete slabs. But they've been turned loose to just do the footings only at the time. And I have several other commercial projects, but these are the two I picked out to talk about. Anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Bob?
I do.
No. John?
Just for the public watching at home, we haven't done one of these in a while, but the, the cost of demolition and of the structures and stuff, how, can you just kind of go over briefly how that gets assessed to properties and such?
You know, I, as far as assessment goes, they would be...
Doug?
Doug, answer that. I wish I would have put down the total cost on that, but I took the best of three bids and that cost was around $4,000 something, which I was very pleased with the bid. It was somewhere in that area. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah. I think with the timing that might be assessed for 2019, it would be assessed as a special assessment on the county's taxes. And just like our special assessments, a person could not, if they were to pay their tax, if they wanted to pay their ad valorem taxes, they would have to pay our lien also and then that would be reimbursed to us from the county.
Thank you. Randy?
I was just curious on the residential permits that have been pulled. Is there a specific area where you're seeing more being pulled than others or is it just evenly scattered?
I think it's distributed really pretty well, uniform. I, yeah, every area as far as I, and also, there's been several homes that were built as specs that are sold. I mean, just here within the last week or so, which has come out of nowhere. That was nice. It's always good to see those get sold.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. That was it for staff reports, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion? Ben?
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve the consent agenda.
And Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to new business, the new item A, which is consider the city setting up an account for donations. George?
All I wanted was to set aside like $400, $500 in a fund, set aside. If compliance finds people who are just simply unable to, to buy the paint and stuff, to take care of that stuff, if they can show proof, come to city hall, if they can show proof that they need the assistance, that we should help them. I mean, if, it's a no-brainer to me. If you want the city to look nice, you want these houses to look nice, then for crying out loud, give them a break. Give them some help. Just that simple.
Tom?
I've got a question and I didn't want to put this off two weeks is the reason I voted in favor of putting it on the agenda tonight, but is there something we could set up here like, maybe like we got the water fund where you could take donations to? I mean, there's people that would donate something like this to help people. I don't know what Mr. Capps is looking at, but, you know, well, I know, but he's talking about $500 and that'll do...
It's just a figure.
Seed money or...
Yeah.
Okay.
About a lot of paint for $500.
John?
I just, I know, and I don't know the numbers off my head, but the county has their waste disposal that they provide paint. I want to say it's a dollar a gallon. This has been a few years ago that I knew that, but it's fairly cheap. That's recycled paint and I've known some people that have used it and said it was quality stuff. They strain it and clean it and just get it where they can put it back out. There's, I mean, the colors are more limited. I think at that point, they had white and gray and tan and something like that, but I don't, I don't know if there's other resources through churches or through... I, I don't, I don't know if there's other resources through churches or through something like that. I'm not, I'm just not sure. But I think the cause is good.
Well, I was really wanting us to, to work with people. I, I spent so many years in the administration of justice, I've watched people. Usually, they get in the system and they never get out, especially if they're, if they're poor people, they don't have money. They get a ticket, they can't pay their fine, it goes into warrant. Next thing you know, they get picked up, they get thrown in jail, they get fined again and, and they never get out. I was, and, and, and you know, if we're spending money on some of the stuff we're spending money on, we surely could find some way to help some of these people. Just, just my thoughts.
Brandy?
So we have a lot of builders in town. I don't know if there's something we could reach out to the builders with their extra paint to see if they would be willing to donate that extra paint to the city for us to hold on to for a time to use that. Something we can reach out to them.
Melvin?
I'm all in favor of that. What fund could we pull that out of? Would that just be a general fund, you think, or?
Well, I know MTBE, it's, that's the people's money.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve about six hundred dollars to go to special funds for helping paint houses that needs it and low-income or people that needs it out of the M T, MBT money.
I was just going to make a comment that we ought to approach the county and find out if there's anything available. They get paid to donate it all the time. I don't know whether they would be willing to donate any back, so, but I would be happy to call dinner and find out.
Did you want a second for discussion?
Yeah, I'll second that, Melvin's for discussion.
Ben?
So with that, if we set up this fund at six hundred dollars as been mentioned, could we not, again, then as even as Tom suggested here and Brandy suggested, have some sort of, and I don't know where this would fall under, so I guess this would be good for discussion part is where people could drop off and, and use as a, you know, we don't want to become a trash collector for people's ways, but builders or so that would be able to donate there. And what we might find is that once we have that established, the fund might not necessarily be necessary because we've had builders and such donating and so we still provided the service and we have the option available to also use the money when needed. So is that something that we could look at here in this case is off, is, is creating something for our builders or for some of these groups to be able to donate unused supplies?
All right. Jim?
I don't know how to answer that, but I would just, my, my questions really are, if we're going to do something like this, what are the parameters? I don't know how we can approve anything until we know what the parameters are for who qualifies and who doesn't. Is this for material and not labor? I think it has to be a little more specific. I'm apprehensive about approving something until I know exactly what we're doing. And I don't know, I haven't given this much thought. I'm just not a lot of money. I mean, there's always a need for this, that's fine. So I just kind of wanted to narrow it down and figure out who's going to do that.
I'll just coat tell off of that. I mean, honestly, in this type of situation, we should rely on churches and civic organizations in town that we can put people in touch with because they have vetting procedures in place. When we look at doing something here, who's responsible for that? Can a city employee be eligible? Can a councilperson be eligible? Who's writing the, the, who's going to write out and draft? It's not as simple as just saying, hey, I need some money for my house. Who's going to vet? Are we going to put the person at the front desk that it's their responsibility to figure it out? But when you look at civic organizations, and generally, that's what I would say, police department usually operates with, is when you have somebody that's in a domestic violence situation, don't you have contacts or reach outs that you can put people in touch with? Isn't that the direction to go versus us now becoming a five-on-one, two-three and we're the vetting people? I, I don't, I don't think that's our role. But I think we should embrace those civic organizations in town that would say, hey, I would, our group would step up to the plate. If you have somebody that has a need, let us know and we'll see what we can do for them. Because they have things in place. They have benevolence funds, they have people to sit down and walk through people through whatever crisis they're going through than just handing a check. They have something that will carry long-term with those individuals. Jim, did you have anything else?
No, I think you covered it there. I, I hadn't really thought whether it was us administering it or, or one of these civic organizations, but you make a really good point there. There's people there already set up. I just, I just want to know what that is and what the parameters are. If, if it's us, what's the parameters for, for qualifying?
John?
Oh, well, actually, you guys covered a little bit of what I was going to say, but I do, I do think, I think the idea is great, our heart's in the right place, but I'm not sure that we're doing the right order by going in and throwing money at it. I think something needs to be put together and, and I do tend to lean towards foundations or someone else, whether it's pride, that we as citizens, as council members, support pride and allow them to do things like this rather than the government or the city doing it. I do think that a little bit of research, a little bit of footwork, we'll find out that the county already does this, like I said, the, the paint recycling and things like that. I mean, I'm in to help with donations and stuff like that, but I just don't know that it needs to come from the, the city government.
Okay. Melvin?
Well, I agree, there's a lot of organizations out there, churches, and I think we even have one, do we still have Operation Friendship? That does that stuff too?
Yeah, well, with the water bill. I mean, they, they come in and they, we pass on information, they make a decision, they will write a check and bring it up and say, we want you to apply it to this account.
And I think we need to cut the corners as much as we can by the paint and, and builders got some paint to donate or whatever. Maybe Rick's got a corner of a garage back there to be warm, keep it, I don't, I don't know. And I don't think it'd hurt for his councilmen, maybe roll up their sleeves and go paint some too or help out somehow.
Okay, Tom?
I'd push my butt and Jim, John, pretty much covered the areas I was thinking and then you also touched on it. When I mentioned something like the water donations and stuff like that, I'm struggling with taking, even though it's MTBE money, taking taxpayers' funds to go private, paint a private house with paint. And that's why I was trying to look at some other way of, of funding that. We need to help people if we can, but I'm, I'm just not sure that we've thought this out correctly tonight, so. We're pushing it in the right direction, we're just not there yet. Make sense?
George?
Well, it sounds like I got the discussion started in the right way. Apparently, people have come up with some ideas they could help, which is what I was looking for, instead of just heavy-handed putting it to people and driving them deep into the administration of justice when they, where they can never get out. And you know, some things are just right and some things are wrong. And forget legal or illegal, right's right and wrong's wrong. And when you're, when you've got a person who can't do it and you force them into that situation, to me, that's not right. I, I was, I was one of the first members of Project Friendship with Olin Hebert, worked with him hard. And I know some of the people we dealt with. Yeah, man, I, I dealt with some seniors and two of them were very sweet, gracious ladies who have now passed on. And, and we had to give them assistance, but those people's social security wasn't enough to, to cover what their, cover their bills. And you know, what do you do? Some were, you can't just be heartless. Or I guess you can. You know, the people here, most people here are fairly affluent. I don't know what it's like to try to support a household and stuff on three-hundred-and-fifty or four-hundred dollars a month. We dealt with some people like that. And, and there's people like that in our community. And if there's some way we can help them, whether it be with money or, or coming up with, with, with a list of, of people who can help them, you know, at least they got the shahs going.
Ben?
Sure, I would just echo even what George said, even in his request from two weeks ago to at least have this added and when it's thrown on last minute. Without any type of proper preparation for it, it's hard to, to have a real adequate discussion on this, to come up with, with plans and, and such. So adding it last minute, I think has been, while it's gotten the discussion going, I think it's been very good discussion. I think it's also kind of been a disservice in some ways to the fact that it's forcing councilman caps to, to shoot from the hip instead of having had, had time to adequately plan this out. And so we've kind of put them on the spot tonight, so.
Well, I didn't expect it to be on the agenda, it wasn't there.
I know there's the motion and the second already, but I would just like to say, I'd like to maybe see that pulled and maybe we add it to next meeting's agenda. That way we can maybe reach out to some organizations and have a, have a good listing of some people who would be willing to step up and help. That'd give us time to go out and reach out to some of the, isn't, or organizations in our community, even maybe reach out to some of the builders, see if they know of anything that, you know, maybe we don't know about.
Melvin?
I'd be willing to pull it from the agenda if we're going to have it on next, next council meeting agenda.
Tom?
I was going to vote against it in the form that we have, so I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I didn't think it was, I thought it was a discussion item.
Okay, so I need a motion. What are we going to do? I think you have a motion in a second.
I'd motion.
You just polled it.
You just.
So the motion got polled.
Okay.
So now I need a motion to go forward.
Can Mr. Capps ask you to put it on the next agenda or do we need to have a motion to that?
Here's the problem with this.
Okay.
Somebody has to do this. So we can't, we, we have, you haven't come up with anything. So a proper motion would be put two people responsible, George and somebody else, to go formulate a plan, put it in a piece of paper and bring it for the next council meeting. That's a plan, but we, you still haven't got any direction. If, if you don't do anything now and you just say, put it on the next agenda, this is the same conversation that's going to happen at the next meeting.
Well, Mayor, I could write a list and, and give it to compliance, just like it does, did when I was the police department. And here's a list of, this is a Salvation Army, da, 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 da. These are who you can go talk to, to get help. Now, if you want me to put together a list like that and give it to compliance, I'd just be more than happy to.
Well, somebody acts like, Brandy, you act like that list needs to be approved, so.
Oh, no, I don't think it needs to prove. I just think it was just more of a discussion, so maybe we could then formulate how we move forward. Do, do we do something as a council and create a fund or do we reach out to the organizations? Because now we have a listing of, okay, we know we have fifteen organizations that are willing to step in and do it. It just gives us better information as to which way we could possibly go with it.
Okay, so do you have some direction you want us to?
I would just like to see, make a motion that we add it to next agenda, have George and I, I'll step up and help George and we come together and figure out, you know, who could, who could help? Do we have, do we have people in the community that are willing to help? If not, then we bring it back to the council and we then ask to maybe set up a fund. But I would like to see it added to next agenda with those being the results.
The next agenda that you're going to present a list of people that can help.
Right, I mean, they'll give us the, it gives us the opportunity to go out to the community and see who, who, if, if there's any organizations out there that can help assist with the painting or donating paint. If not, then I'd like to see us as a council maybe create a little side fund to help the individuals. But, I mean, by then, we will know if there's groups, so George and I can sit there and come up with, okay, here's what we think the requirement should be to be able to qualify for these types of services.
So wouldn't it make more sense to wait till you get to the last part where you have a, a list for the council to look at as far as requirements and the funding that you're asking for, for approval?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So you're making a motion for you and George to be on a committee to investigate how we can help people with painting their house?
I guess, but do we need a motion for George and I to investigate? Really not.
I don't, I don't know why the council needs to approve anything. If you've got a list of service organizations that help people, why do we need to approve it? Just put it together and give it to them. I mean, why make it complicated?
That's, I'm just trying, but you want it on the next agenda, so what do you want on the next agenda? I don't know.
I didn't ask for it to be on the next agenda.
Let's just, let's just strike it all and just, we'll work together and see what we come up with.
Okay.
Okay, and then you'll report back if you need something?
Yes.
Okay. John?
The thing I was thinking is, I'm just wondering if, you know, at some point, maybe through Jack or I guess through the chief now, maybe compliance currently has this list. Because I know that a few months.
They probably do.
Sorry?
They probably do have a list.
And I just hate for you guys to do this work that already has been done. I just remember a few months ago, we talked about issuing some paint violations and, and we talked about resources that they talk about, tell people that is out there. So I'm, I'm wondering if maybe this has already, already been done. So just to say.
Can you answer that?
I can't give you the specifics, but I do know that both on animal control issues and on some of the nuisance issues that code enforcement has provided contact with volunteer organizations and churches, people are willing to help, so, but I don't know, you know, the specifics of the list and so forth. I can check into that and find out. And if we need more information, I can get more details for the next meeting if you'd like, or I can provide it to you, Mr. Mayor, during the week, whichever.
You want to do a report on it, on the, the next council meeting, just what you came up with?
Sure.
Okay. George?
It was probably a bad idea. I wished I hadn't run it up, but, and I'm sure they've got the answer already there. I work for that department, I'm sure they've got the answers. And, and I'm sure they don't need me and Brandy to tell them what they already know. I would just like to see us work with these people instead of driving them down into the justice system. If they could afford to paint their house, they'd probably paint it. And if you put them in, and you put them in the justice system and find them, then not only can they not paint the house, they've got another problem. And I just, that's all I got.
Ben?
I think we kind of got off on the painting part. I don't think that was the only issue that we're, that George was even mentioning there. I mean, we got other issues that compliance deals with, with individuals that just don't have the ability to, whether financially or physically, to take care of some things. And I think that was the heart of the issue, was not just making sure a house gets painted, but to make sure that, you know, there's resources out there. And I think looking at there, I was contacted actually today by a group. Unbeknownst to all this conversation, a group that wants to get involved and help people that have code violations and such that can't do it. So I think either updating this list or, or, or whatever would be great. And then if need be, you know, have a conversation from there, but I think it goes far beyond just painting a house and paint, although that became the majority of our discussion. I think there's other things that we, that some of these groups could look at.
There's no motion and no more discussion, so we'll move on to item B, which is the attendance at the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference. Dana?
Yes, this, this year, the conference will be in Topeka. And what we just are wanting to know of, of which of the. to know of, of which of the, um, council members would be interested in attending, and we will make the reservations for each of you, um, so, basically, this evening, if you can decide, if you already know who wants to go, or Mayor, if you'd like to have the council members contact myself or Daniella, and we'll make those reservations for each of you. It is a good opportunity for training, particularly for the newer council members, if you've not been to a meeting, I think the members who have would say that it was a beneficial opportunity.
Jim?
When is it?
I'm looking in my packet, and I'm not seeing it.
I didn't see any of those. Usually in October.
It is in October, I don't have the exact date, and I apologize for that, I'll send out, uh, the information, we'll make sure that that gets sent out to everybody, as far as the dates, when the conference will, um, take place, and then, if you know that, if you are available to go, and you're interested, then we'll definitely make those reservations for you.
Was it Wichita last year?
Yes.
Okay.
It moves.
I know I went last year, and I was thinking we kind of rotated.
It does.
Okay.
Tom?
I'd be interested in attending, so, depending on how the council works it.
Okay. John?
It's October sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Thank you, Councilman Lanier.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to governing boundary reports, we'll start with Jim.
Um, just a couple things, I wanted to compliment Jack, and whoever helped you on this parks and recreation comprehensive plan, I read it, and I enjoyed having the listing of things that were on the, on the radar, and, second thing was to say, I was glad everybody came out on the Fourth of July, and the parade, and the activities, saw a lot of people, and, that was, that was a nice day.
Brandon?
Um, I just want to second, Jim, I appreciate everybody coming out to the Fourth of July, I appreciate all the council that came out to the park and helped volunteer, um, to get this going, and, and it turned out to be a huge success, and so, we're looking for some new activities to add next year, so, if you have any ideas, please let us know.
Okay. George?
Uh, you know, my wife and I came here in nineteen sixty-four, lived there a long time, and I know a lot of these people, especially in Ward Three and Ward Two, which was their original city, and, I have a lot of feeling for them, if my feelings for them get in the way of this, I'm sorry, but it's the way I feel, uh, you can't, y- you know, we're not rulers, we're servants, we serve these people, we don't rule them, and, I just, sometimes I get surprised at, uh, how it's looked at, I've seen so many people come and go, and I, and I go back, I, I've been here almost since day one, and one thing strikes me, and, and it's part of what was taken off the agenda, but from the word go, back in when we first become a city, it was always hire from outside, hire from outside, we gotta do a search outside, we never, we never really looked, y- you know, the administration didn't hire me, the, the city council did, they recruited me, I, I remember the first time when I was, they, they, they jumped on me and said, why did you, why did you back out the first time? Said, we was gonna appoint you, and they recruited me again, the administration of this city never, the, the government did, they wanted someone from Park City to work for them, as a police officer, and, you know, I, I, I've, I've watched this go on, every time there's an opening, well, let's do a search, let's go outside, and, uh, I frankly don't understand it, but, that's my piece.
Tom?
Uh, North Junction's got a lot of attention with federal highways, state, and, uh, city of Wichita, and the county, uh, I've been pushing it for the last seven or eight years, looks like the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County's looking at, I'm not sure if they're doing a million a piece, or kicking in a million dollars together, to start funding for right-of-way and other things, engineering and stuff, uh, to be determined, uh, we had elections today, uh, Dan Wozak, county commissioner in Butler County, is now, uh, chair of WAMPO, and David Dennis, uh, from Sedgwick County, is a, is a vice chair, so, um, moving on, so, but I thought it was real interesting, North Junction's finally getting attention, and I think it, uh, it's the freight, and, that moves through Kansas, and it goes through the intersection every night, and every morning, that's, uh, forcing it, so, it's a good thing.
Okay. Melvin?
I'm good.
Ben?
Sure, I want to say, big thank you to the Fourth of July Committee, that worked very hard to get everything done, um, they put on a phenomenal salute to freedom event, and it was very well attended, I want to say thank you to New Anthem Church, who provided some water activities in the afternoon, that George, Chief, and I got to participate in, and then, uh, to Temple Baptist Church, for supplying a numerous amount of volunteers to be able to make sure it happened there, so thank you all for everyone that came up to that, I want to say thank you also to, uh, the new operator of the BMX track, they held their state qualifier event on Saturday, and after it was nearly rained out, with all that massive rain, they worked till one o'clock in the morning, Friday morning, so they would not have to cancel the event, and they made that track look nice, and they put on a great event on Saturday, so, thank you to them, and if you see them out and about, make sure you tell them thank you, they're representing our city well, and they have great, uh, ambitions for what they can do there, and I'm excited to see how we can support them, and then finally, I just want to say thank you to everyone that came out Saturday, I appreciate hearing from constituents on concerns that they have, I heard you all loud and clear on what you all, uh, spoke with me about, and I encourage you to continue to do that, I love hearing from you.
John?
Had a great time at the Fourth of July celebration as well, and, I think our volunteers and our folks did, did a really fantastic job again, so, thank you for that, and look forward to next year, thank you.
Okay. John?
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Ben?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes seven zero.